Call the order, the Lake Mills City Council meeting for April the 5th, 2016. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Elizabeth, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Grundon advised us that he would not be attending today's meeting.
Very well.
My goodness. Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here.
Mr. Knippel?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
And before we go any further, I just want to remind everyone that the polls are open till 8 o'clock. Please come out and vote if you haven't done so.
And bring identification.
Bring your, yeah, picture ID. And item three, correction and approval of the city council minutes of March 15th, 2016. You have a motion of acceptance.
Second.
You can move out second.
Second.
We have a, we have a... Any corrections or anything, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Correspondents?
I had a little bit.
Okay.
After our mention at the last meeting with the letter from Carol Burrows about the senior center, I had some people approach me on that, thought that was a good idea. And their, their comment to me, to be shared with all of you, is that they recommended that we look at how the Watertown Senior Center is run and of how they made their building and so forth, because they think it's one of the best run around, run senior centers in the area. And so I wanted to just share that so that you all know what I heard as well as me and that as we progress in the future with that, that we not forget to look into that.
Very well. Steve?
The only thing I was gonna mention was Alert Sense came with this month's city bill and other than that, I had no correspondence.
I think Steve's...
Well, you got anything?
No, nothing from the high school, but how did the voting go today? Did everything run smoothly?
Open for fifty-six more minutes.
Yeah, now they're still open till 8:00 PM.
It's a high turnout.
It's over sixty percent.
It was a high turnout, yeah. That's good.
So, yup, and a lot of first-time voters. So, that's good, too.
Nothing, nothing in my front. Everything was quiet.
Okay, I got just, I got a phone call today from Patricia Cicero about a couple items. And one of the items that I'll mention is that she was interested in using some of the trees that are gonna be cut down on Main Street to give them a second life as a fish habitat in the lake or along the shoreline or outside of the shoreline, especially along the park at the, at the north end and also the DNR area in there. So, it's, she's going to kinda work on some of the details and some of the requirements and whatever and she'll get back to us and maybe we'll look into that further in the future. But I thought it was a very good idea. And that's basically all I had, so...
Just to comment on that comment, it isn't something we can only do right now. I mean, if we decide we're going to do that, we cut down trees all the time. We have dead trees all the time. So, you know, it's something she and Rob would have to work on, wouldn't it?
Yup.
I assume the DNR would be...
They would be involved.
Big part of that.
Yup, the city would be involved. I'm sure the township will be involved and, yeah. Okay. Okay, well, so we'll close correspondence and go on to questions and public comment and seeing no one in the audience, we'll go ahead and close that.
Can I just mention that maybe we should also mention it to the Rock Lake Committee?
They'll, they'll be heavily involved.
Okay, 'cause I mean, it'd be kinda sad if we left them out of that discussion.
No, they'll, they'll be heavily involved. Item six, city manager's report, Steve?
I received a letter, actually from the Lake Mills Area School District, was passed on to me from the Surface Transportation Board about docket number FD 35952 Great Lakes Basin Transportation Incorporated, authority to construct and operate a railroad line in Indiana, Illinois, and Wisconsin. Notice of intent to prepare an environmental impact statement, draft scope of study, notice of scoping meetings, and request for comments on draft. The railroad runs from La Porte, Indiana to Milton. So, I don't know why it came to the school district, but Dean brought it up and said it probably applied more to us, so I'm looking at it. I'm trying to figure out what's going on there. I received the, an email from Nathan Piles regarding updating the Rock Lake Management Plan. They have received grant from the DNR. The Rock Lake Improvement Association has received grant from the DNR to update the lake management plan. And they would like me to serve on the advisory committee. If that's okay with you.
I think it would be very advantageous to do that. Council agrees.
And that's it for my comments tonight.
Okay.
Did you wanna say anymore about the Alert Sense?
Find it first. The Alert Sense letter did go out in the packets or in the bills this month. So, people should've gotten them. The telephone number is included on the letter, which I do not have.
That's just, it's the, um, it's, hang on, I didn't get it from here. But it's the non-emergency phone number, right, for the police department?
Yes, and I've got it here. It's nine two zero six four eight two three five four. And you wanna talk to Mick Selk.
So that...
They're from eight to three, Monday through Friday.
So, if you wanna get on the, the list to get notified of different things that go on in the city, such as power outages, water boil orders and stuff like that, that'll be automatically sent to your cellphone. Give, give Sergeant Mick a call and get on that list.
It allows you to go right straight to the website and edit it if you want to, or you can call Mick. And it does allow you, we did go through and populate the thing through the white pages and, and utility bills and nine, E-911. But there's still a lot of forms that we missed. So, if you're interested in getting all your phones in there, you will wanna get, go to that website or call Mick. The, the other one is, is there are obviously some people who don't want that information. And if you wanna get your telephone taken off of the list, you can also go on or talk to Mick.
Okay, so this is, this is an effort of the city to be able to notify the population of different, different events that, that may affect you, such as the boil orders and power outages and just, just for an information that the city needs to pass on to, to the residents. So, it's a, it's a, it's a, just, just another effort for the city to communicate with, with the citizens of the city.
There was another item on there, the customer letter. We did receive a request. We did check with the Public Service Commission. They told us that we couldn't refund the money. But I put it on here so that you would know.
Yup.
And then there was a Fire Chiefs Association conference and there were a couple items on there. Two of them were about fire department consolidation efforts. One of them was a referendum. And so I, those were things that I found of interest and hoping that Todd attends.
And our chief, Obie.
Our chief.
And we did earn the two, well, it meant the letter from Arbor Day.
Yes. We went, we get that every year. I know people don't, but it, we plant enough trees to meet the requirement and we maintain the trees in a proper fashion. So, the Arbor Association realizes that some trees have to come out in an urban environment
So, even though we're go...
As long as we continue to replant trees, we meet the requirements for being an Arbor city.
So, they're gonna forgive us for doing Main Street? But we will, we will make it right after, after the construction's done.
That's what they look at. They look at if you replant the trees.
Yup, yup, okay.
And there was a TV program on this past week about the ash spore and it showed what the bore itself looked like and what the adult looked like. And their comment was, please get those trees cut down, because every tree that's standing becomes a harbor for more of the insects. So, I thought, yay, we're doing our part.
Yeah, they're coming down first.
Good information. Maybe they'll make a good fish haven. Okay, let's move on to item seven, acceptance of minutes of the Lake Mills Housing Authority for January 26th, 2016. The Joint Rock Lake Committee of February 2nd, 2016, and the Library Board of February 15th, 2016, they'll go on record. And city council business, we have miscellaneous license. Beth, would you read those, please?
Leah Miller and Sandra Uren, I'm sorry, Urenker? Both tavern operator licenses.
Do I have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
In a second, please?
One second.
Mr. Scharr?
Yes.
I would recommend that you separate the two applicants, because the first applicant, we would have to table to make sure that she's met her residency requirement before issuing.
Very well, so we'll go ahead and separate those and it'll just be Sandra?
No, Leah. Leah's first.
No, Leah, well, yeah, you separated her out.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're going to put her on hold until she's...
Oh, we're not gonna do it, her, at all.
I would recommend that you do a motion to grant the license and then table it. And then we'll just check with her about how long she's been in the state of Wisconsin to make sure that she meets the statutory requirements. So, it may very well come back to you next time. She does have a provisional license so that she can continue to work while we're checking on it.
Very well, so do I have a motion to table Leah's, Miller's application until...
So moved.
In a second?
One second.
And the vote, please?
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
So, we'll, we'll table hers until probably the next meeting and make sure all the Ts and Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. And we'll go on to Sandra. Do I have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And I apologize, 'cause I cannot pronounce her last name. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And we have a presentation, but I see no presentator.
I do not either.
So, we'll go on and move on to the next one and keep that...
Comes in, we can take it again.
Yeah. So, the next one is item D. And this is discussion and decision on the Engineering Contract Amendment for the Lake Mills Dam Rehabilitation Design. This is being done by Mead and Hunt. Would you read the resolution, Betsy?
It is a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion.
Motion sixteen four one one, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement for all design work related to the Lake Mills Dam replacement. Whereas the City Council of Lake Mills pursuant to the authority conferred by Wisconsin State statutes has established certain standards and procedures for the maintenance of public infrastructure within the corporate limits of the city of Lake Mills. And whereas the City Council of Lake Mills is responsible for the maintenance of the physical elements of the city, including repairs that in the city council's judgment bear a relation to the health and welfare of the city. And whereas the city manager has received a proposal from Mead and Hunt Incorporated for an amendment to services contract that provides for professional engineering associated with the replacement of the Lake Mills Dam and spillway and has forwarded that proposal to the city council for its review and recommendation regarding said proposal. Now therefore be it moved that the City Council of the city of Lake Mills has hereby approved the amendment to the agreement for professional engineering associated with the replacement of the Lake Mills Dam and spillway from Mead and Hunt Incorporated, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part hereof and authorizes the city manager to sign the agreement.
And do I have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And Steve, would you, would you enlighten us on this?
The original design agreement included one set of bidding, which they did, and then we rejected the bids and so they had to come in and redo the bids. You'll note that the original bids that we rejected were, the low bid was $560,000. The second bid, the low bid was $439,000. So, we saved, what, $120,000, $121,000 in the second bid, but it did cost extra to do that extra bidding. One of the other items I, I wanna make sure that everybody understands is that's for the design of the dam and the bidding process. Now, as construction occurs, there will be an engineer that will be part of that and that will be another agreement we'll have to sign. And we'll probably spend more than we might normally have. The contractor for the, and this was in the previous memo when we did the award, but the contractor is... Has experience, but he's not highly experienced. So, the, the decision was is to have an engineer on site more often to provide more direction or at least be able to consult with the contractor on a, on a more regular basis. That was the trade-off in the fact that the next low bid was like $520,000. So, we would've saved from the first bid, but this bid, even with the extra engineering costs, which is gonna be about $25,000 above what it would've normally have been, we're still way below on the, on the bid costs. But it does guarantee us that we get a high-quality dam, that we don't have to go back and tear out it.
Discussion?
Well, I think it shows that we made a really good decision to drop the other bids and start over. And I think the public should be happy that we were fiscally responsible.
Betsy, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Item D is a discussion decision on the length of time the flags are displayed downtown. And I guess this is, why don't you read the motion, Betsy, if you would?
There is no motion.
Well, there is no motion. Just a discussion.
Yeah, this was just a discussion, because, I mean, it had never been clearly fleshed out as to what...
What we wanted when we...
What, what the goals were. I mean, what's the problem?
Okay.
And I, I tried to look at it and say, is it that we wanna encourage patriotism? Is that we're trying to save money? 'Cause those are two totally different issues. And when you analyze it, you know, we put 'em up and we take 'em down in a very short period multiple times. There's a lot of labor involved in that. But if you leave 'em up, the flags wear out. You have to inspect them on a regular basis. And if they get damaged, you have to take 'em down and get 'em fixed and put 'em back up. And, and the discussion was is there may not be a lot of, from a cost standpoint, there's probably not any benefit in leaving them up for a long period of time. The real issue then is, from a cost standpoint, there's probably no benefit in doing this, leaving them up all summer. If you're trying to encourage patriotism, then maybe there's an advantage. Because generally flying flags does do that, but also in Lake Mills, there's, it's hard to find a more patriotic community than in Lake Mills. You also end up with situations where if you leave the flags up for a long time, it's like everything else, people start to not notice them and not care. And when you put, take them up and put them down, they tend to have more influence. And then, and then there are other issues. I mean, we don't know why this was brought up. There could be a red herring issue in here or some type of ad populum issue. And then what are we doing? We're just trying to encourage conflict?
Yeah, and, you know, and, and I, I was reading, going through this and, you know, especially the, the US Code on, on flag displays. And, you know, I, I knew that if you, if you display a flag at night, it has to be illuminated. And I certainly don't wanna not follow, follow US Code on that. And I agree that, I don't know, when I see the flags being put up, I, you know, it, to me, it's a special, it's a special event. It's not...
Well, like today.
Yeah.
When you drove, got out of your driveway and you drove up the street, got to downtown and the flags were up. And if, if you hadn't thought of it being Election Day, it tells you there is a...
Something special.
And then you think and you go, oh, I gotta vote today.
Yup.
You know, it's, it has a purpose, I think.
Yeah.
And we, there was no way for us to flush that out with a more in-depth conversation and why it was being brought up. And they're, they're prob, you know, if there's a good reason to put flags up for a longer period of time, then cost isn't an issue. I mean, if we wanna have flags up, then we're gonna put 'em up. But on the other hand, you know, if there's no good reason, and I think there's a lot of debate as to having the flags up all summer or not, does it really increase patriotism? Is there, you know, do we gain some benefits and lose some benefits? We've already discussed. Some of the things we lose is notification of special events. So, those are the types of things we needed to be able to start discussing and fleshing out and then saying, hey, this is what we think would be the benefits.
I wonder if there might not be some other ways to, if we're looking at more patriotism, you don't have to flag a, fly a flag to be patriotic, patriotic. I can't talk anymore. But there are, you know, you can put banners, some banners here and there. There are a lot of things we could do that wouldn't require being lit at night and so forth. So, maybe, I, I don't know where exactly this came from, but if the people that were behind it, if, you know, they might consider some alternative to the actual flag. It's the actual flag that's got the rules.
Correct.
The banners, some sort of loopy banner somewhere in the city or something. That wouldn't follow that requirement, so...
And, you know, there, people do a lot of things that, for patriotism, but if you read the code on how the flag is done, can't wear it. You can't have, the only ones who can have patches are the military and, and certain government professionals. They're, the way you fly the flag is very particular. If it becomes damaged, you have to get it down and get it repaired. And when you have to get rid of it, you have to do it in a very specific manner. So, there, there are a lot of things that go into taking care of a flag. And so it's, it's not just as simple as putting the flag up and letting it hang. You're running, if you got a flagpole up in the back of your truck and it's touching the bed of your truck, you're, you're gonna end up at the Wall of Shame. Did anyone go to the Wall of Shame? That's a place where they have pictures of people who are doing things inappropriately with the flag. And it's more, you know, and it's not just the people who are burning the flags. There are lots of people who think they're being patriotic that are doing things that are very inappropriate.
Yup. Blaze, you wanna chime in?
I would say that Lake Mills already does an excellent job promoting patriotism, as it is now. So, I think, I mean, flying the flags for a long period of time, like all summer long, maybe, may not be the fiscally responsible thing to do. But also, I mean, it doesn't really make that big of a difference in the whole deal of it, talking about patriotism. I would say no.
Now, your dad is another one of those Navy guys?
Yes, he is.
Ah, right. Good man.
Well, and you know what? I have a flagpole in front of my house and I used to fly it more often, but it, it seems more special when I fly it on special occasions now. Not to mention, I mean, the cost. I went through nylon flags. In the past two weeks, we've had 50, 60 mile an hour winds. And you'd come home from work and it would just be shredded. And, and it's like, in weeks. I was buying a lot of flags. And so, I mean, but, but I do actually, now, I'd rather fly it just on special occasions. Voting Day, Fourth of July, you know, Armed Forces Day. And it, it does mean more.
And we do, we do fly a lot of flags in the city all the time. I mean, we have to have one here. We have one in the Commons. We have several at other locations throughout the community where we fly 'em pretty regularly. It takes us quite a while to get flags to half-mast around the city, so...
Yup. And just for the public information, if you didn't already know it, the, the American Legion, they, they take care of the old flags. They actually burn 'em in, in private. And then the ashes are spread on veterans' graves. So, it's a fitting end to, you know, the symbol of our country. So, just, just wanted to pass that on. Okay, let's, I guess we put that to rest, huh? So, we'll just keep our ten days and, and get 'em down before nightfall. And I guess, I guess we should be more, be more aware of that, 'cause I know sometimes we don't get to 'em.
Well, we leave them up for several days. Most of them are under the streetlights, but I don't know if that's appropriate illumination. Well, I guess when I was reading the code, it said that as long as they're illuminated well enough that you can see them appropriately.
Okay.
That they were, that they were illuminated appropriately. But they can't touch anything and they have to be a certain distance from the light.
Okay.
And that, that may, you know, if we made a change now, that would maybe become an issue with the new streetlights we put up. We're gonna have to look at how we do that.
Well, just, we'll just, we'll just make sure that we're in, you know, within, in code and, and do it respectfully. So, we'll, we'll go ahead and put that one to rest and just keep it like we're doing and, and just, just make sure that we're following all the regulations. So, this brings us to item E, Resolution sixteen dash ten. This is a kind of a special thing. This is a recognition and appreciation of service for Councilman Ed Grundon. So, if you would, Elizabeth, read that?
Resolution sixteen ten, an appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills, Ed Grundon. Whereas Ed Grundon has served as a council member of the city of Lake Mills for 15 years and whereas Ed Grundon has served as a council president of the city of Lake Mills for nine years and whereas Ed Grundon served on the council and library board and whereas Ed Grundon has exercised his leadership skills amidst difficult and serious community discussions. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lake Mills does hereby wish to express its appreciation and acknowledgement on behalf of the citizens of Lake Mills to commend Ed Grundon for his dedication, enthusiasm, and public service given to the city of Lake Mills.
And do I have a motion of acceptance of the resolution?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanna ditto the appreciation. I mean, he did it for 15 years and we couldn't even get somebody to run for the job on the regular ballot this time. So, this is a gentleman who, whether you agreed with him or didn't agree with him on an issue, you have to admire the fact that he was willing to give of his time to serve our city.
Very well said, thank you. And the vote, please?
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
With pleasure, aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Item F, a public hearing amending the sewer impact fee. And I don't see a lot of public.
Happy with their sewer. That's good.
Okay, so would you, I guess we can close the public hearing and go to item G, the ordinance 1163, amending the sewer impact fee, first reading. And just read the title on that.
Ordinance 1163, Amending Sanitary Sewer Impact Fees.
And if you have any issues, whatever, call your, call your representative.
Or come to the meeting.
Or come to the meeting, yes, very well said.
I mean, you, we had the public hearing tonight, but you can always come to the council chamber... council chambers and speak during the, um, questions and public comment.
Absolutely.
So.
I, I might note that if you're a resident in the city of Lake Mills, it will not impact you, other than the fact that helps keep your sewer rates lower.
So, this.
If you're building a new house in the city of Lake Mills, then this would impact you.
And it impacts developers? Yes?
Well, the way it, the way it works is, is, and it's kind of a combination, but when you build, we don't charge it until you build the house. So, some developers just sub, you know, build the subdivision, they don't build the houses. Then a builder buys, builds a house on it, sells the house and the lot, and they incorporate that cost to the home buyer. So, it's more of a, a home buyer cost than not. So, if you were looking at, um, there are three presidential reports that say that zoning codes and impact fees are what are, what have made houses in the United States unaffordable. But from the other opinion is, is that they help control water and sewer rates.
Okay, item nine, uh, recommendations for future agendas, council? Staff?
I know we have several items, but.
I guess I would like to at least have a discussion about how or whether we're going to proceed and going into a senior citizen center and, you know, it's just preliminary discussion.
Okay.
If maybe just that, um.
Okay. Why don't we do that? Why don't we put that on the agenda? Okay, nothing else. Uh, we're gonna go into, um, kind of convene into closed session pursuant to statute nineteen point eight five, paragraph one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So, we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And would you call the roll?
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, we'll go into closed session in the closed session room in five minutes.